Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. At this point, I'll do the notice of the electronic participation pursuant to School Board Policy 139. School Board Member Participation in Meetings by Electronic Communication. School Board Member Diane Ralston of the Neabisco District will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. At this time, approval of the closed session agenda, motions in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion's in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees and officers, and to receive advice from Division Council on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with Division Council and receive advice on legal matters requiring the advice of Council and/or pertaining to actual or probable litigation as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zaragapour.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
At this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return in approximately one hour. So the Prince William County is now returning, the School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Closed session certification, action, a motion's in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of February 2nd, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed session meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters where eyes were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the School Board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zaragapour.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Did you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session, action item, a motion's in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zaragapour.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
I'd like to now call this meeting to the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. Ms. Flynn, can you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, moving on to the approval of the agenda, a motion's in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion's in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd just like to publicly recognize our clerk and our deputy clerk, Ms. B. Simpson, and Ms. Brandy Reeves, in honor of, excuse me, School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Without them, we have no resources to help us get our job done, and that is not even technically their job. So I just want to publicly thank you for all of the hard work that you do, the interaction and time that you put in that is outside of your actual scripted job duties that help us stay functioning as School Board members. It is greatly appreciated. And then I'd also like to just acknowledge it's Crossing Guard Week. Just like bus drivers, crossing guards are usually the first and last contact that our students have on their way to and from school, and often are left out of the conversation. And I just would like to take a moment to thank them for all of the hard work that they do to help our children have a good start to the day, a good end to the day, and to arrive and leave our school building safely.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
I just wanted to also say to Bee and to Brandy, thank you for receiving all our phone calls, trying to keep us straight, and we're really great listeners, aren't we guys? We really do appreciate you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Next, we're moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who sign up in advance with a clerk may address the School Board this evening when they're called to the podium. The citizen comment periods for regular School Board meetings is limited to one hour, with the first half-hour reserved for comments on agenda items and the second half-hour for comments on non-agenda items or topics germane to the operations and policies of PWCS. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak on the agenda item they have identified, or they will be asked to step down. We have ten speakers on agenda items, ten on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I will call the first four, so that if they're outside, they have to make, make it to the front here. Mr. Jeff Fuller first, Martha Cutzinger is second, Lena Osmey is third, and fourth is Maggie Hansford.
Hello, Board. Dr. McDade.
Neighbors. How many of you here for masks?
Okay. Well, I'm going to focus on the Dr. McDade's plan. I'm Jeff Fuller from the Gainesville District. I want to address a couple of facts. On transparency, Dr. McDade has not kept her promise. Now, I have the QR code links to the various videos that I had referred to, but in the case of Dr. McDade, I'm going to quote, "With the release of that plan, you should expect that there will be opportunities to have engagement around the strategic plan, unpacking that, taking a look at some of our goals, and giving you an opportunity to take a deep dive into the practices that we will be employing in the school division." Hasn't happened. Not a single question that I know of has been answered in public forum. Now, one of the questions we have is, critical race theory Marxist, or critical theory? I'm going to quote Professor Bettina Love from a podcast, "Destroying capitalism is part of our freedom dream, is part of the long-term goal." Sounds kind of Marxist. More on Marxism, Maria Burgos, some of you know her, former equity officer here, "Understand a Marxist framework and you'll understand how it is used in education." Think about that. The person that wrote the equity statement. Dr. McDade's plan mentions equity thirty-two times. Why is it required? Why that big deal? Because it's assumed that we in Prince William County are systemically racist. Systemically racist. Dr. McDade's plan calls for graduates to thrive as global citizens, not American citizens, voting at the UN. She also asserts that restorative practices improve a school climate and reduces student suspensions and discipline disparities, and creates things like Mr. Dar's daughter being sexually assaulted and the charge being downgraded to inappropriate touching with one-day suspension. So I think restorative justice requires a little bit of a look, and I would be grateful if the School Board would please examine all cases where you downgraded from sexual assault to some lesser charge. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, thank you for giving me a moment here. I too am here to speak about the strategic plan, and like Mr. Fuller, I was expecting an opportunity to have some sort of town hall or dialogue about this. To my knowledge, that didn't happen. There was an online form you could submit, but there was no back-and-forth dialogue. So I'm going to read to you, because I think a lot of people on this board have not investigated Castle. You've investigated the fifty-five-page strategic plan, which mentions Castle one time on page twenty-seven, but you have, I doubt you've investigated Castle. If you have, I hope you're voting against this plan. So I'm just going to read to you from Castle, about Castle, and the framework that you're about to adopt. And I know it's coming from VDOE, but that doesn't excuse it. So, this is seventeen pages I'm going to read snippets of, but every page is essentially the same. "Social and emotional learning has the potential to help mitigate the interrelated legacies of racial and class oppression in the U.S. We recognize," and this, I'm just reading bits from every page, "we recognize that the circumstances surrounding marginalization, exploitation, and oppression are varied and complex. In this brief, we focus primarily on issues of educational equity and SEL with regard to race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status as a first step towards addressing this complexity. How did we get here? Racial, ethnic, and class issues continue to vex American society. Cultural analysis suggests that issues of racism derive largely from an overemphasis on the accumulation of wealth within culture, within American culture. Historically, this cultural value prompted some to exploit others for personal advancement. White elites promulgated racialized and cultural stereotypes to recruit poor and working whites into hierarchical economic systems that exploited them, but also empowered them to oppress and further exploit people of color." It goes on, it just repeats. This is what you're implementing, this is what you're going to bring from kindergarten to high school. It's reprehensible, but I'll go, I'll keep going, I've got a little bit more time. Castle, again, this is Castle on Castle. Castle is refining a specific form of SEL implementation that concentrates SEL practice on transforming inequitable settings and systems and promoting justice-oriented civic engagement. This form of SEL is aimed at redistributing power to promote social justice through increased engagement in school and civic life. I don't think anywhere in this seventeen-page document do they talk about reading, writing, and arithmetic. Nowhere. The concept of transformative SEL is a means to better articulate the potential of SEL to mitigate the educational, social, and economic inequities that derive from the interrelated legacies of racialized cultural oppression in the United States. Finally, you are not concerned about their social and emotional well-being, or you would let them remove their masks. Thank you.
Lena Osmey? Maggie Hansford.
All right. Thank you, Chair Latif and Superintendent McDade. My name's Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file. I'm speaking today with regards to the annual budget. I've been speaking at board meetings for years regarding our community's priorities. I want to thank our educators for your amazing work this year and every year. I have three boys in our schools, and I finally hit the parenting level that I have a child at every level, elementary, middle, and high. I remember coming back to board meetings year after year, and in 2018 advocating for a step in COLA for our educators. Many of those educators that were with me that day are no longer with me due to they left their profession with inadequate pay, limited benefits, and not having a clear path for retirement. We didn't get a step in COLA that year, but we did the next. Steps are important because they create a pathway to retirement, and cost of living increases are important because they provide a livable wage for our educators. Our schools are amazing because of our staff that we employ. During a national teacher shortage, it is especially important that our budget reflects our priorities for retaining and recruiting the best educators. Our students remain our top priority, and that means we must provide those students with the best staff to educate, transport, and feed. We must ensure a competitive salary to retain our staff, and that means providing a livable wage and a pathway to retirement. I appreciate Dr. McDade for your tremendous efforts this year. I also thank the Board for your continued focus on ensuring our students receive a world-class education, and I'm confident tonight that the budget will reflect our community's priorities, and I thank you all for that. Thank you.
The next, the next four will be Bonnie Klakowitz, Stephen Lorenz, Ken Nar, John Paul Raffllo. Ms. Bonnie Klakowitz. Okay, Steve Lorenz.
How do you know she's not outside of the atrium or outside waiting?
So I'll let them in if they, if they come in, sure. Bonnie Klakowitz, Steve Lorenz, Ken Nar, JP Raffllo, any of them? Okay, Jeremy Pinson.
You locked them all out. You might want to wait. Why wouldn't it be outside? They wouldn't let everyone in. It's a large crowd outside.
Mr. Crow, do you know if any of the speakers are out in the hallway?
What about outside? And outside, outside.
Yeah. So I'll, we'll, Jeremy, Jeremy Pinson and Padreus Prater, any of them in the room? Okay. While we look for those folks, we'll move on to the non-agenda items, and we'll go
Hi, my name is Taysha King, and I'm a Gainesville resident. Simple, simple part of this is you've turned the schools in Prince William County into many health departments, and because of this, the students have suffered. In Prince William County, the school Code of Ethics, number six, states in part, "I will always remember that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare and academic performance of all students attending the public schools, and will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all children in the school division." You have failed to do this. My eighteen-year-old senior in high school has been removed from school to quarantine for a total of twenty-one days with no real-time resources to keep up with the teaching in her classes. The superintendent has been proud of in-person learning, but if it's so important, then why do you not give the children you send home to quarantine access to the classes? I've been told that Canvas has been created to support the kids. Canvas is a good support for Miss Day or Two, but not for seven to fourteen. Simply put, Canvas is instruction without teaching. My daughter's first quarantine was in September. After she was contact traced to a COVID-positive friend, she was then asked if she was vaccinated or not, and she told them no. She was sent home for fourteen days, but everyone else that was around this person, if vaccinated, was allowed to stay in school and continue to learn. The ironic part of this was her friend came down with COVID and caused her to be sent home, was vaccinated. During the fourteen days my daughter was sent home, she never tested positive, what a waste of time. Two days before Christmas, another one of my daughter's friends who was vaccinated came down with COVID and unfortunately gave it to my daughter. My daughter spent Christmas in quarantine, opening presents alone in her room, while the rest of us, including grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins, opened presents in our living room. We tried to get her tested at Patient First, but were turned away, and Walgreens and CVS had no appointment, so we did the next best thing, we found a home test. The fourth day back from winter break, my husband received a phone call that my daughter had to quarantine again because of COVID. Another vaccinated friend testing positive for COVID. After telling the nurse and the principal she just had COVID two and a half weeks ago, and we have a picture of the COVID-positive test to prove it, we were told it does not matter because it was not through a doctor. She was to go home and test the fifth day. Even with a COVID-negative test, she was to remain home for another two days, totaling now seven days. Again, it was another waste of time for my daughter, she did not come down with COVID. In all actuality, it put her behind in her studies, and it was during midterms. Due to her unnecessary quarantine, she had missed two tests and a quiz. She reached out to that teacher for help to update her on material she missed, but the teacher could not be bothered to help her. I'm not here to debate whether or not vaccines work, but I'm here to give you the facts that we have personally experienced. The vaccinated still get it and spread it, so cherry-picking one or two kids is not going to help. The facts are only 1.8% of students that you send home come down with COVID, but if you still decide to discriminate against the unvaccinated, then it's your responsibility and your job to provide real-time access to the class teaching. Thank you.
Cynthia, so let me actually, I'll go, I'm going to, I'm going to go back and call some of the names of the folks that didn't come in. Do I have a Bonnie Klakowitz, Steve Lorenz, Ken Nar, John Paul Raffllo, Mr. Pinson, or Mr. Prater? No? And your name is, sir?
Stephen Lorenz.
Oh, yes, Mr. Lorenz, please.
Pay attention. Greetings. I'm Stephen Lorenz, a resident of Gaines, of the Gainesville District, a PhD physicist and a leader of a small tech company that actually does do rocket science. Prince William, Prince William County is the second-largest county in the Commonwealth by population, but has an embarrassingly small commercial tax base. The burden on the residents to fund county operations amounts to about eighty-five percent, while the commercial side is funding fifteen percent. A much healthier ratio would be something like sixty-five residential, thirty-five commercial. However, the county is essentially out of available land for commercial development, which has severely hampered future growth, forcing many companies to locate in surrounding counties or move, move across the river into Maryland. The school budget is representative of a broader social-economic struggle, one that was set up by the actions of the Board of Supervisors in this county twenty-one years ago, by the creation of what some call the rural crescent. This is basically the western half of the county populated by less than ten percent of the people. I do happen to live on that side, but fifty percent of the acreage of the entire county. The majority of the current Board of Supervisors is in favor of expanding, of expanding the commercial development, particularly that of data centers, in an effort to bring in the needed revenue to fund fundamental changes to the county's school system, as well as many other needed improvements in services across the county, across the whole county. Unlike other forms of industry, modern data centers can be eco-friendly, they create low noise, they use few, few natural resources except for the land they sit on, while contributing enormous sums to the economy and to the tax base. Prince William County is not only last among northern Virginia counties in funding per student, but also even behind Fauquera. The residential tax burden is already excessive. Anybody that rents in this county or owns property in this county understands that. The county should not demand even more from, from the residents. The only solution that I see is to change the restrictions that were imposed by a board twenty-one years ago. I'm asking that every principal, every teacher, every parent actively support the current board of supervi, of super, I'm sorry, of supervisors. As efforts are made this year to expand growth in this county, that can result, within just a few years, in enormous benefits to the school system and the students of this great county. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Mr. Ken Nar?
My name's Ken Nar, I'm from the Gainesville District. As a former farm community, inner-city, and suburban high school social studies teacher, having been the primary author of one of the Marine Corps University's strategic plans for reaccreditation, and having been the lead instructor-designer for the Marine Corps Instructor Professional Development Program, I can tell you with some assurances that Dr. Latanya McDade and her staff have, are to be commended for an extraordinary job in drafting the new Prince William County School's strategic plan. Unfortunately, I wish I could tell you the hard part was over. The costs associated with implementation over the next three years will more than likely be an assortment of SPARC donations, corporate sponsorships, federal research grants, and national teacher education endowments. If the submission, coordination, and management of all the funding isn't enough, the School Board and Dr. McDade also have to work the political landscape to lock on sustainable renewal streams, revenue streams, that can support these efforts past implementation and well into the future. It don't do our, it doesn't do our children any good if they get a short-term intervention for a couple of years, and then the teaching and instruction degrades back to where it was when Dr. McDade and the administrators and the teachers identified that we had to do better. The population of Prince William County is projected to increase by approximately a hundred thousand by 2040. More families translate to more students, which requires more teachers and resources than currently projected. Prince William County already has a major housing shortfall, however, we cannot build our way out of this fiscal dilemma. The residential tax base simply cannot support the school's projected fiscal requirements, let alone address the rest of the county's unfunded infrastructure requirements and vital, important new programs. Property taxes and assessments have gone up almost every year for the last decade. Prince William already has one of the highest property taxes within the Commonwealth. The residential and commercial tax revenue streams have been out of balance for more than two decades. Data centers are the most commercial revenue-positive source available to any locality. The proposed Prince William Digital Gateway alone will increase our commercial tax base to the planning target of thirty-five percent. The Prince William Digital Gateway will be a technology corridor dedicated to over two, twenty-six million square feet of data center development in the coming years. When completed, the Prince William Digital Gateway will conservatively generate over five-hundred-million dollars of commercial tax revenue annually for the county. In accordance with the already-established 57.23% tax revenue sharing agreement between the county and the schools, this equates to two-hundred-and-eighty-six-million dollars a year for the school system. As we have already seen, Dr. McDade's amazing vision of the world-class education for every child in the most diverse county in the Commonwealth has a big price tag.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. Appreciate it. Mr. JP Raffllo, John Paul Raffllo?
Yes. Thank you. So I'm a father of three, two have already finished all their schooling here in Prince William County, have a son that's in eighth grade, have seen the positives and some of the negatives that, that are going on in our school system. We have to understand that to get to a point where we compete with Loudoun County, we have got to have more funding. We have a solution that can help all of you, everyone behind me, everybody in the county. It's, it's unfortunate that at this point in time, we do not have a scenario laid out where this can be taken advantage of quicker, and that's why we're here tonight. You just heard the statistics. We're looking at anywhere between two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-million dollars of new annual revenue. We're looking at anywhere between 250 to 400 million dollars of new annual revenue to the school system if the Prince William Digital Gateway is approved. That is a whole lot of school, that's a whole lot of technology, that's raises for our teachers, that's no more trailers behind Battlefield High School, that's better facilities for the athletic departments. If we want to continue to bring in the kind of educators that we know you want, I know I want, we have to be able to pay them. I met with a principal today. He told me a story about how he had trained several teachers within his system. Three years go by, he has to see them leave because they go for better pay elsewhere. $12,641 per student is what we spend per pupil in this county. That is second to last in the entire greater Washington DC area. This is not good enough. You know it's not good enough, I know it's not good enough, the people behind me as well. We need to have your help on the Prince William Digital Gateway. If you give us this help, if your teachers, your educators can help us, we can in turn help you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Bonnie Klack, oh, I'm sorry, let's go to Jeremy Pinson? Sorry.
Yeah, that's me. Hey, good evening. I'm Jeremy Pinson. I'm new to the area. I live at, on Finn Castle Drive right down the street here. I'm here to talk about the budget. I want to talk about other things too, but apparently you got to decide what time you have. So for the budget, just real quick, I'm not going to support any funding increases for anybody as a voter, and I'll organize against them unless a couple of things are met. One, the budget needs to clearly tell us where all the appropriated funding for COVID went. Because if I can go to my local store, if I can go to my local store without a mask, and my daughter can come with me, then she should be able to go to her school without a mask. So I want to know in the budget where all the appropriate funding was, where it got spent on, like literally every single penny, before I'll appropriate or work to appropriate any funding for any increases for the school. And second, I want to know that they're not teaching critical rates during the school. And I know that everyone says it is or isn't taught, but if the tenants of the legal profession are taught to teach either my kid that they're a victim or an oppressor, I don't want it taught. I don't want money spent on it. So if money is being spent on that in the budget, if money is being spent on that in the budget, again, I'm going to vote against and organize against anyone that votes for it or, you know, tries to increase the budget at all. So that's what I really came here to say. One last thing before I go. So I got here late because I came directly from work and had to sit outside. It's really hard to understand you guys when you're wearing your masks. But on that point, it's really hard for my kid to understand the teacher every day the same way it is for everyone on the cheap sheets to understand you guys. So thank you for your time.
Did I see Bonnie Klackowitz?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Dr. McDade, and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Klackowitz. My information is with the clerk. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the strategic plan. I was a teacher in Prince William County for 28 years. I appreciate the effort that has been put into this plan and the many references to equity, learning and achievement for all, inclusion of more student voices, focused efforts to support students with learning disabilities, establishing centralized supports, and coordinated efforts in order to expand family support and engagement. Overall, I do believe it is a solid plan. My concern is for how it will be accomplished. Will site-based management plans be monitored so no school will be tasked with more than any other school with these initiatives? I see that teachers will receive more training on the implementation of the new strategies such as high dosage tutoring and a plan for unfinished learning. Will more staff be hired to help with those issues? Because I would like to caution you to please do not workshop your teachers to death and put more on their plate than they already have. In fact, I would like to recommend that more of your focus in this plan should be to offer support for teachers and support staff. Your employees have stepped up under the most extreme of circumstances during the COVID pandemic in order to teach. They do that job every day. They know what works and what doesn't work. What they need is more mental health support for themselves and their students. More counselors are needed to improve the counselor-to-student ratio. How will this be accomplished, and why is that not a priority? Where is it stated in commitment four that it is the teachers who will have the most communication with families, and that they are the best source and the best resource to remove barriers to communication and facilitate collaboration across offices, schools, and families? Trust your teachers. They are the most vital link in accomplishing these strategic goals. Remind students every day that it is their responsibility for their own learning. Engage parents by reminding them that supporting teachers and education support professionals will set an example for their child so that they may become contributing members to our society. Is that not the goal of public education? Thank you, everyone in this room up here, for your dedication to our students in our schools. Thank you, teachers and all classified employees for your hard work. And thank the parents who are supporting all of the efforts to keep everyone safe in school. And thank the parents who encourage their children every day with love and high expectation so that they can reach their dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prater?
Good evening, Chair Latif, Dr. McDade, and school board members. I'm Pedro's Prater, and I am a resident of the Niasco District, and my address is on file. I identify as an African-American male, a husband, but the most important title of all is dad. I have a daughter and a son. My daughter's age four, and she'll be entering the school system, and we're quite proud about that here in August. And so we've been watching as parents here in the community, active for over 10 years, what you guys are doing in order to represent us and our future, our most precious commodity, our kids. And when I had an opportunity to look at the strategic plan, there was one area that stuck out to me the most, and that's probably because of my mother, who's no longer with us. She was an educator in special education for 30 years in a town called Decatur, Georgia, DeKalb County School System. And she'd be so proud to see how you guys have a robust understanding, a direction with the Special Education Department, which is another vulnerable, a vulnerable subject is a vulnerable pupil of students, and how you guys are doing your best to kind of uplift and really recognize the value that it brings to provide additional support there. There was one particular line that stood out to me, and it reminded me of my mother's assistant. They called her a paraprofessional, and she traveled with my mother from school to school over 30 years. There's a particular line in the strategic plan that talks about allowing the assistants to become certified teachers. That is so important, because what better way to teach the next generation of special ed students than bringing it from right, right there and supporting that as a, as a, as a board, as a school system? Again, my most important title is father. African-American male aside, community members aside, I know quite a few of the people who are here. And while my voice might be stifled by some of the rhetoric that's, that's been displayed here this evening, just know that we all have one thing in common: we're parents. And our voice, our voice is valuable. My support is 100% behind you guys and what you guys are doing. I'm so excited. I'm so excited that we have an opportunity to have our kids in public school here in Prince William County, and I want to continue to commend you guys on a job that I think you guys are doing a job well done. I've been following you quite a few, quite a few of you all for a couple of years. Just stay focused. Remember to keep the vision first, keep the students first, keep a listening ear to the parents, and I think everything else is going to, is going to work out. Again, Niasco District, my name is Pedro's Prater. Thank you for your time.
Next, we'll have, and I'll go ahead and announce the, the next three. It'll be Cynthia Kilmer, Richard Jesse, Jessica Newton, I'll do four, and Kalen LeHue. So first, we'll go with Cynthia Kilmer.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Kilmer. My address is on file with the clerk. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and approximately 1,500 staff members to ask you to reconsider and rescind the resolution adopted in September of 2021 requiring your unvaccinated staff and staff that refuses to disclose their vaccination status to be weekly tested. Those of us here tonight hope to be the voices of all those who object to this discriminatory policy, and more importantly, the children that we serve that will be devastated by the consequences of this resolution. We ask you, if students are the top priority, why would you threaten to remove their teachers amidst a critical year of recovery? If you're, if you value your staff and their roles, why would you attempt to enforce a policy that discriminates against and violates the privacy of those who have given so much to make in-person school possible? If anyone, regardless of vaccination, can contract and transfer the virus, why is only one demographic of employees threatened with termination? Since federal and staff guidance has made clear that mandates such as this are unlawful and unconstitutional, what authority does Prince William County have to continue down this path? These questions and many others have been asked for months and still go unanswered. Since passing this resolution, we have taken time to research and consider the impact on this, of this on our lives, our schools, our communities, and our students, have you? Let's take a moment to understand the resolution. In almost five months since it was passed, so much has changed. In fact, the resolution itself was founded on the information that, in policies that no longer exist. The resolution states, "Tens of thousands of elementary and middle school students are not yet eligible for the vaccination. The vaccines were made available for these children ages five to 11 at the end of October." The resolution states, "The urgency to expand vaccinations is increasing as the highly contagious Delta variant spreads, but Delta is no longer the dominant variant, and Omicron affects both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals alike with much milder symptoms." The resolution states, "Executive Directive Number 18 encourages other employers to require their employees to be fully vaccinated, but this directive was rescinded by Governor Youngkin's Executive Directive Number Two, and multiple legal proceedings over the last five months have deemed such mandates by employers to be illegal and unconstitutional." The resolution cites a public health emergency from August 21st of 2021, and guidance from the Virginia Department of Health put, but the public health emergency was terminated by Governor Youngkin's executive order in January of 2022. And the VDH's current interim guidance says that testing should be offered, not required, for unvaccinated teachers and staff. When passing this resolution, it appears little thought was given as to how it would be implemented. For example, if I test on Wednesday, results are not available until Friday, and I'm available and able to return to work the following Tuesday, this means the testing program is only able to identify an asymptomatic infection and isolate staff members for one day of the six days they would have been considered contagious by CDC guidelines. Not only is the, is the process flush with oversights and contradictions, it is outdated, unnecessary, and the purported benefits do not outweigh the enormous cost, inconvenience, and negative impact on students, staff, and Prince William County as a whole. Thank you.
Richard Jesse. Richard Jesse.
My name is Richard Jesse, and my address is on file. I want to clarify some misrepresentation made at the last school board meeting by some citizens. There were allegations that Youngkin's won the Commonwealth overwhelmingly. He only won the Commonwealth by 1.94%. Additionally, I have stated before that you are living in Prince William County, and Youngkin lost the county by 14.81%. For your group to imply that you are in political position to impose your will on an entire county is not correct and laughable. Your group is against the school division requiring masks. I, I believe most parents in Prince William County support wearing a mask and have no desire, and have no desire for their kids to be forced to sit in the same classroom with your kids without masks and likely not vaccinated. They have their rights, and I believe they are the majority of parents. I give you credit for being much better organized and better at speaking up publicly. I would say to the parents who want all their kids in school to wear masks and be vaccinated that you must stop being passive, stop being intimidated, and hopefully stop getting, and hopefully get off your gluteus maximus and come to stand up for what you want. Let's change the subject. I recommend change to citizen time. If a citizen needs an interpreter, they should be given seven minutes instead of three. Number two, the allocation for 10 agenda speaking speakers is to change to five. The allocation for 10 other topic speakers to be increased to 15. Citizens are not, are allowed to participate virtually, that they be allowed to participate virtually as it's done at the Board of Supervisors. And citizens may use their cameras as they do at the Board of Supervisors to be seen. If Ms. Walls may comment and support speakers who speak at citizen time, the other members should be allowed to do so also, and I encourage you to do so if this is the case. We are not wearing masks. The wearing mask rules in this building is evidently not enforced because we have more than 100 people here that don't wear masks. And I don't, and thank you.
Jessica Newton. After Jessica will be Kalen LeHue, Kaylee Bruton, and Katie speaks. So Jessica Newton.
Hi, I'm Jessica Newton, and my address is on file. The mandatory testing resolution has a tremendous negative impact on teachers and staff. When you agreed to this resolution, COVID-19 told a different story, including but not limited to the efficacy of the vaccine. Although things have changed drastically, you have not reconsidered your policy. Just as teachers are expected to continually gather data and adjust their instruction to match the needs of their students, circumstances have changed, and your decisions need to be revisited to best serve your staff and community. I'll draw your attention to some of the most striking examples of outdated or contradictory policy. One, both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals are contracting and transmitting COVID, but only those unvaccinated, regardless of exemptions or undisclosed, are subject to invasive testing. Two, unvaccinated students are not subject to testing, and they likely outnumber staff 10 to 1. Three, teachers are forced to use sick leave if they do get COVID, while vaccinated staff are given leave that does not deduct from their banked time. Four, testing does not happen at their assigned work site or during their contract hours. Five, some staff are paid for the time to test while others are not. These are just some examples. Perhaps the most egregious aspect of this resolution is in the execution. The consent form you're requiring teachers to sign is insulting. There is no such thing as mandatory consent. That is called coercion. Are you aware that staff must agree that, quote, "To the fullest extent permitted by law, release, discharge, and hold harmless Prince William County Schools, school authorities, and cyan diagnostics, and without limitation, all of Prince William County and cyan diagnostic representative officers, directors, employees, representatives, and agents from any and all claims, liability, and damages of whatever kind of nature arising of or in connection with an act or a mission relating to COVID-19 testing or the disclosure of COVID-19 test results." Why would anyone release all liability for damages they may suffer due to forced participation in experimental testing? It is suspicious and concerning that you would mandate this consent while, all while touting the safety and security of your testing process and hold their job security and livelihood hostage. It is a breach of their privacy to require disclosure of vaccination status, however the violation of privacy is extended much beyond this. Despite claims of keeping their medical information confidential, principals, secretaries, and department chairs have by default all been made aware. The subject is not without debate, and staff members who are holding differing views on the policies and politics now have access to their private decisions and react accordingly. This creates unnecessary tension and a hostile environment that is not conducive or giving their best effort and attention to students. Another negative impact of this resolution is the toll it's taking on our teachers' mental health. In a time when they are constantly reminded to consider their students' social and emotional well-being, the irony does not escape those of them receiving threatening emails, text messages, and calls to sign a mandatory consent form, comply with testing, and ask no questions.
Kalen LeHue. Kalen LeHue. And let me go back. Lena Osmey, if she had come in the room, Mr. Crowe, I don't know if she was out there. Lena Osmey was from the first list. So we'll go to Kalen LeHue. Next, Kaylee Bruton. And I apologize if I said the name wrong.
That's all right. It's Callie Cassidy Bruton. Thank you. My address is on file. Continuing what Jesse began, we are a county that prides ourselves on excellence. Messages from Prince William County regarding this testing have been sporadic and at times completely contradictory and frequently evasive and rude. HR has stated in several emails, "You don't have a choice." Then we get an email thanking us for volunteering to participate. The HR director questioned certain teachers as to why we waited to file an exemption, but there is no limit of time to when we file such exemptions, and frankly, we didn't know they existed. know they existed. The frequently asked questions were not posted until January 14th, four months after the resolution was passed. We were notified of testing requiring on the 19th and told to start on the 24th. This timeline is absurd, and it leaves no room for questions or concerns, which we've already mentioned many. The frequently asked questions also state that we'll be tested by professionals. However, job postings on Facebook and other sites say, quote, "Job opportunity in Prince William County. We need to hire staff to conduct COVID testing, pay $16 an hour." Not only are we taking experimental tests, but now we're hiring anyone off the street to do that? The concerns over professionalism and safety continue on and on. Cyane Diagnostics has reported multiple issues, such as losing 50 tests and having to have them redone. Hiring people from Cyane and then not using them to actually administer the test is also of grave concern. Another teacher who went to the testing site observed that names and barcodes were visible to anyone who visited the site. This is egregious. If you go to the site, you'll have ample awareness. There are signs posted everywhere stating Prince William County Public Schools COVID Testing Site, available for any parent visiting a sport event, a school event. It's for all staff to see. It appears this process is the furthest thing from safe, confidential, or excellent. And this will have a tremendous impact on our staff, our colleagues, and our students should it be implemented to its fullest extent. We already have a major sub shortage, and when subs aren't available, we cover each other's classes. This is a burden for all teachers, all administrators, and on the students themselves. When a student finds out their teacher's been put on leave, this will be an amendous impact on their spirits after an entire two years. And when we're on leave, we won't make sub plans because we're not being paid, which means another teacher will have to implement sub plans and put more stress on their already stressful plate. In some schools, students will be broken up, separated from friends, pods, and in general, their world will get rocked. These are elementary schoolers. Everyone suffers. We are suffering because we are unpaid. You're financially ruining us. Those that are left in the building take on additional stress and responsibility. Admin will scramble to cover our classes, and students will suffer most of all. More instability, more time lost. Thank you for your time.
Katie speaks. And after Ms. Speaks will be Ms. Kimberly Stewart, Mary Ann Jensen, and Kristi Buzzy.
All right. I'd like to add on to what Callie said with some data. We surveyed 34 teachers, which is less than 1/46th, or about 2% of the total number of staff that would be impacted by this resolution. In our group of 34, there were 22 teachers, six specialists, one bus driver, and five who play other roles in PWCS. We also have many teachers with gifted ESOL sped or special certifications, and their absence would impact over 200 sped students, 30 gifted students, 215 ESOL students, multiple students that are deaf and require sign language interpretation, and students that require reading services or PAL supports. It's not just teachers. We also represent five coaches who coached 277 athletes, five club sponsors who help sponsor over 690 club students, participants, and many other responsibilities. If this policy remains in place, it is our students who will be impacted the most. Take a second to put yourself in their shoes. You get to school and find out your teacher isn't there. Teachers occasionally get sick or have to miss school, but what if this continues for days or weeks? Your teacher is gone, and no one can tell you where they are or if or when they will be back. Some days, there's a sub in your room, but not one that can help you with any assignments. Other days, different teachers rotate through the classroom in 30-minute increments, or maybe you're put in an auditorium with other classes and one adult to supervise you. If you're in elementary school, your class may be split into groups and placed in another teacher's classroom with different rules and routines. You've been separated from your friends. You've completed all the work that was assigned before your teacher disappeared, and now you're frustrated that none of your work is being graded. Maybe it's not your teacher that is gone, but your coach. Practice isn't the same. You lose a game, and the season feels broken. Maybe it's the counselor or the librarian who always had a piece of candy and a smile when you were having a bad day. Maybe it's your bus driver, and now you have to wait for 30 minutes or more after school for one bus to complete its run and return to get you. COVID-19 has caused tremendous disruption to everyone's lives, particularly our students. High school seniors are the only ones who've been able to experience a full, normal school year with dances, pep rallies, plays, concerts, and sporting events with their friends and family in the audience or bleachers. Anyone younger than third grade has never experienced a full, normal school year. While much of this has been beyond our control, you now have the opportunity and responsibility to prevent further disruption unnecessarily. We can't give our students back everything that they have missed, but we can do our best to keep them from losing anymore. This mandate will have long-lasting negative impacts that far outweigh the benefits. These same teachers you wish to place on leave are the teachers who were eager to get back in the classroom and end virtual school. We are amazing teachers who have passion for our students. Please allow us to be free to teach and do what we love.
Kimberly Stewart.
My name is Kimberly Stewart. My address is on file. It might be my campaign slogan. I want to start by thanking Ms. Jennifer Wall for her committed time over the past two weeks and listening to her constituents on a variety of concerning issues. We have felt seen and heard by you, and we appreciate your time. In a world increasingly divisive, I'm here to advocate that we finally come together to find common ground, common purpose, and common decency, to do what is in the best interests of kids. The past two years, we have lost sight of the most important part of our educational system, the most vulnerable piece of our community, and the part that will be our lasting legacy. We have forgotten about our kids. I am here to push for the parental rights to opt children out of mandatory masking, to advocate for our amazing teachers to end the vaccination and/or testing requirements, and to finally end the statistically impractical quarantine and close contact tracing that is consuming the time and attention of our staff away from the most important job, teaching kids. We need to get back to rigor in our instruction, community and relationships in our classrooms, and give our children their childhood back. End the mandates, end the protocols, and let our kids get back to a valuable and meaningful learning environment that is conducive to providing them the education they deserve that focuses on their academic success to support them, engage them, challenge them, and help them grow into the bright, beautiful, and intelligent children that they all have the capability of becoming. For too long, we have stifled their exploration, their interactions, their connections, and their growth. It is time to focus on supporting policy and process that does no harm, policy and process that focuses on what is best for kids. I am a member of the so-called loud minority, because doing what's best for kids is what I am passionate about. I am an educator, and I am a mother, and I have seen the light dim in so many children because we have, as adults, have created a policy and procedure forced upon them that have shuttered their abilities, their talents, and their gifts. Their light is dimming, and it's because we are unwilling to be open-minded and open-hearted, compassionate humans to work together toward a more collective good that meets the needs of our children based on sound, practical, and common sense approaches. I became a teacher because I wanted to do what is best for kids. I am a mother, and I want what is best for my kids. I'm here today to urge you, and urge all of us, to work together to do what's best for all kids.
Mary Ann Jensen.
My name is Mary Ann Jensen, and my address is on file. I know there are many educators who want to protect children. This goal is not different from my own. Our implementation preferences may differ, but we want the same thing, to get through COVID without harm. Unfortunately, politics leads us to believe there is only one solution: masks. Yet thousands of schools around the country have been open during the entire pandemic without masks and no corresponding rise in serious illness. There were not child coffins lined up as some educators in this county suggested would be the case. In fact, things have been going pretty much as normal. Kids are getting sick despite wearing masks. We are forcing healthy children home for exposure despite them wearing masks, and we are segregating children by vaccination status and religious exemption status despite the wearing of masks. So I ask you, if masks work, why don't they? I'd now like to cover the facts. Not policy is determined by the White House, not CDC recommendations, which I remind you is still policy, policy, I might add, that changes by the day without any basis in science at all. So here are the facts that are available to any one of you. Over the course of the pandemic, 49,000 children have died of all causes. 331 of those were COVID-related. Yet we have turned kids' lives upside down at school for what is essentially a non-risk. Let's put that risk into context. Last year, fewer kids died of COVID-19 than of heart disease, cancerous tumors, suicide, homicide, and drownings. Have the protocols -- have the schools stopped serving hamburgers and french fries? Have we put up tin foil on the ceilings to block power lines? Do we even address the growing incidences of suicide during the pandemic? No! We play politics with kids' faces by placing restrictive fabric over their noses and mouths that the CDC itself has said, "Don't do anything," and it's for their safety. This is asinine. This is blatant political theater, and it needs to end. Finally, regarding that end, I need to point something out that has been bothering me. On November 15th of last year, I had the privilege of speaking with Dr. McDade for 10 minutes following the CRT Town Hall meeting. During that discussion, which was friendly and cordial, I asked what she, as superintendent, could do to get the kids out of masks. Dr. McDade told me that she would if she could, but that her hands were tied by then-Governor Northam's executive order mandating face coverings. And if it weren't for that, things would be different. Well, tonight, things are different. And I'd like to ask you, Dr. McDade, tonight, what has changed, and what do you plan on doing now that your hands are untied? I'm, in fact, I'm asking all of you to step up the way other leaders who have and are ending COVID restrictions by the day. When will you? What will it take? You are on the losing side of history, and it's time to make that right before these children now.
Kristi Buzzy.
Good evening, and thank you for this time tonight. My name is Kristi Buzzy, and I'm a librarian at Reagan Middle School. I'm here to highlight awareness on two important issues that have already been brought up tonight. First, the mandatory COVID testing that is happening with a select group of employees. And second, how this testing protocol will impact our students. This testing is the result of the resolution that was passed in September. As you've already heard tonight, its rollout has been anything but smooth. Our closest colleagues don't even know what is happening, so we know that the community, and maybe even some members of the board, are not fully aware of how this resolution is playing out. So there are three things I'd like to make sure have been brought to light tonight. First, the testing is discriminatory, and it's futile. Only employees that are unvaccinated or those who have chosen to stay private are required to test. It's February 2022. We all know that vaccinated or not, anyone can contract and spread COVID. What does testing one group of employees actually do? Is anyone really safer or healthier as a result? Or is there another motive? Is it simply punitive? Is it tied to more federal money? Whatever it is, these questions need to be asked because it doesn't make sense. The second point you should all know, to be tested, we have to sign a mandatory consent form. Think about that for a minute. The definition of consent is giving voluntary permission for something to happen. A mandatory consent is a contradiction. It isn't a real thing. Yet here we are, mandated to consent to testing that is required. To make your head spin even more, this consent includes a zero liability waiver. It completely releases Prince William County and Cyane Diagnostic of all liability, even -- we won't -- even the disclosure of our test results. We literally have to sign this, sign away medical rights, in order to be tested. This leads to the final point, and this is the most important because this is what impacts our kids the most. If we are not tested weekly, we are facing termination from Prince William County schools. As ludicrous and extreme as that sounds, I assure you we are not exaggerating. The email we all got on the evening of January 19th made it perfectly clear, and I quote, "Employees who fail to complete the testing progress -- process will be placed into a default leave of -- a default leave without pay status until they comply. A list of employees who are considered ineligible to work will be given to administration every Friday, and failure to comply will be considered insubordination and may lead to further disciplinary action, up to and including recommendation for dismissal." So I quickly asked the board, "Are you okay with all of this?" Was this -- was this your intention in September when you passed this? And can -- it's okay to admit it was wrong and to change it, and that's what we're asking you to do tonight. Thank you.
So I had one last speaker was Lena Osmey. Did she arrive, Mr. Crowe? Did you see anybody out there? Ms. Osmey? Okay. All right, folks, we're moving on next to Kalen -- oh, yeah, Kalen LaHugh. Did she come? Did I miss her? All right. At this point, we're moving on next to Launching Thriving Future's Strategic Plan. Motion is in order, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I recommend that the Prince William County Board approve the Launching Thriving Future's Strategic Plan. I have a second.
Do I have a second? Ms. Jesse seconds a motion. At this point, the discussion, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dr. McDade for any updates regarding the strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. We do have some revisions, and I would like to bring to the podium Dr. Jennifer Casada, our Director of Research, Accountability, and Strategic Planning, to share some updates made to the strategic plan based on stakeholder feedback.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Latif, Vice Chair, Jackson, School Board Members, and Dr. McDade. The draft strategic plan was posted publicly and announced to the community on December 17th, 2021. The strategic plan webpage included a link to an online feedback forum that has been available until today to inform the board's adoption. The feedback forum provided the public with the opportunity to comment on various aspects of the plan and provide suggestions. In total, just over 90 people responded to at least one question on the form. Themes in the feedback received included: compliments on the strategic plan and the process used in developing it, critiques of the strategic plan's equity focus, interest in additional clarification of key terms, data, and concepts, questions about funding for strategic plan initiatives, and specific suggestions for individual components of the plan. In response to this feedback and board member's suggestions, the following edits have been made to the strategic plan. The glossary has been expanded to include additional terms such as digital equity, environmental literacy, evidence-based, restorative practices, rigor, and sustainability, among a few others. Mathematical reasoning has been added to the critical thinker aspect of the graduate profile. Now, I'm going to go through the edits and the various commitments. In the Learning and Achievement for All commitment, edits include an expansion of the mathematics and science sections of the plan, additions to the World Languages section to include reference to additional languages such as Urdu, Farsi, and American Sign Language, expansion of the Health and Physical Education section to include driver education, the addition of sections on libraries, media, and research, as well as student activities and athletics, revision to the Career and Technical Education section on work-based learning and internships. The Positive Climate and Culture commitment includes the addition of a section about cybersecurity. The Family and Community Engagement commitment includes the addition of a section on support for military students and families. And the Organizational Coherence commitment includes clarifications in the strategies related to competitive salaries and benefits, as well as plans for ensuring adequate staffing levels. Additional edits for clarification in language have been made throughout for consistency purposes and ease of understanding. The updated strategic plan with these edits has been posted to the web. We appreciate all the input from the public and board members. The feedback received has led to edits which serve to enhance the strategic plan as a whole. Thank you.
At this point, there's a -- I need to take a recess. I gotta -- there's a tech issue on the strategic plan. I don't see it attached. I don't see it attached, Ms. Simpson. I need that attached to the board docs. So while we, we'll take a recess for a few minutes. Well, actually, before we recess, why don't, go ahead and ask if any board members have any questions, and I'll wait for the, the attachment to be on board docs. So I'll start down here. Any questions on this side? Strategic plan, I know we went through it a lot last week. Any questions? I know the board. We can go to comments as well. So comments or questions while we're waiting for that to be uploaded. Ms. Williams. Oh. Ms. Wall.
I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Casada, and the team, everybody, for taking my questions. I know I gave a lot of feedback, and I see that quite a lot of the feedback that I gave was considered, and some of it was entered into the edits. So I appreciate that opportunity to do a back and forth on things that I thought maybe could be improved, or maybe things that I felt were unclear. So I appreciate that opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I too appreciate the back and forth and the ability to have questions answered and explained. I also want to say that as being a school board member and have sitting, have sat in the seat for a number of years and on several boards, this is my second time around doing a strategic plan, and not as a board member, but not my first time interacting with the strategic plan. This is the most comprehensive, well-thought-out, inclusive strategic plan that really lays out the priorities of the division, what we think we should be doing, not only for our students and staff, but the community interaction as well. I appreciate that the document is easily digestible, and even if there are terms in there that you do not understand, that we have taken the step forward to explain them in the back, in our glossary. I appreciate the fact that our division was so open for comments. I think it's often forgotten that we set up pages and links so that people can specifically comment in an easy manner, but there's also opportunity to do so with your board member or the board as a whole. Many of us received numerous emails directly regarding the strategic plan, and I just want to make note of that as well. It wasn't just what comments received on the website. I appreciate the willingness for the division to meet with all of the board members, as well as members of the community. I think that's really important when you're talking about a four- or five-year plan to lead the division. Again, I'm just really appreciative of how inclusive it is for all of our students and families, considering how much Prince William County has changed in its dynamics since the last strategic plan was developed. So, thank you. I'm very excited about implementing, the implementation of this plan. Excuse me.
Ms. Jess.
Thank you. I guess I'm a senior member of the board, and I've been here for so long, and I've gone through, I've met with several superintendents, and I, I am amazed at this plan. First of all, she presented the plan, and it was evident that it was her plan, but she also gave credit to her staff, and that I took note of. She is a hands-on leader, and I appreciated that. I, I love the fact that this plan is going to be reviewed on a quarterly basis, that there was, there's transparency. The four commitments of learning achievement for all, positive climate, family, and community engagement, and organizational coherence is outlined in the budget. I've never seen a plan where she actually took this plan, outlined this plan on the budget, and aligned it. The division-wide culture is, is her, her, her comment was, "Division-wide culture of exceptional instructional excellence," and those are exactly her quotes. The part of the plan that I really love is the vision for graduation skills, and that students should graduate with, with skills. I've heard so many years, we tout this 90% graduation rate, but her post-secondary plan is something that we need because when we look at kids who go to college, we know that even with graduation from high school, that many of these kids are not very successful in college, many are there for five years. And my favorite part of the plan is that profile of a graduate, the critical thinking with a worldview. I just want to say to you, Dr. McDade, that I've been here a long time, and I have seen many plans. I've done national work where I've reviewed plans, and you and your staff did a wonderful job. Thank you. It's an honor to work with you. Thank you.
It would have been nice to hear you.
We couldn't hear anything.
One else? Ms. Jackson.
I just want to take a few moments. The school system has been asking for public feedback since December 2019, and I just want to say thank you for that. I also met with Dr. Casada, and again, later with Dr. McDade. In the commitments from addressing student achievement, plans to address organizational coherence, to increasing community engagement, to climate for staff, I see the input of our community. I appreciate the time the school division took to gather and include more input. Thank you for answering our questions ahead of time in preparation for this meeting, and thank you for explaining, like, PWCS training is a supplement to the required VODA online dyslexia training. I look forward to hearing more about it. Also, thank you for specifically including ASL in the strategic plan. Thank you for expanding support to directly include, support military families. This plan is comprehensive, data, and stakeholder-driven, and I know Dr. McDade's team, our dedicated, talented instructional staff, and all support personnel can meet these smart goals because they're measurable and achievable.
Wonderful. So our tech situation is sorted out. The, I want to thank Dr. McDade, her staff, Dr. Casada, all the stakeholders who've been involved with this since the very beginning of our program, all the advisory councils, principal advisory councils, superintendents advisory councils, all the different councils we set up to engage parents and folks on how best we move forward with this strategic plan and this vision. I think the document nicely encapsulates the broader community's desires and needs, and I think that we need to fully support this program, consider fully funding this program as we move forward, and making sure we do the best we can for our students. This is a student-centered strategic plan. Clearly, the document takes into consideration all aspects of all the different types of students we're working with in all quarters of this county. And I want to, you know, echo the sentiments of the board members and thank the work being done by the entire staff, our community who's engaged with this on their effort moving this forward. So at this point, if there's no further comment, I'll ask the board to please vote on the strategic plan, and I'm very excited. This is, is one of our biggest responsibilities for the school board, is to pass a strategic plan, implement one, and oversee it. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Wonderful. Very good. We move on next to Student Representative. Tonight, we have Ms. Charlotte Flynn with us this evening. Let me make sure, where am I here? Yes, Charlotte Flynn, Woodbridge High School Junior, joins us this evening. Ms. Charlotte, please.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members in Prince William County. Tonight, I wanted to focus on upcoming goals that the student representatives are working on. Recently, the student representatives have been working on collecting data regarding start times to improve student mental health. According to the CDC, sleep deprivation is associated with health risks such as being at an unhealthy weight and an increased chance of using drugs, smoking tobacco, drinking alcohol, and poor academic performance. The 2014 School Health Policies and Practices Study found that 93% of high schools and 83% of middle schools begin before 8:30, which is the recommended start time for most schools. And although there are many external reasons that starting later at 8:30 may conflict with this, pushing the start times would benefit the mental health of students and staff. When schools start later, studies have shown a significant improvement in academic performance and more regularity in sleep patterns, according to researchers at the University of Washington. With these goals in mind for Prince William students, the representatives are creating a poll to survey the county stakeholders on this issue. Another issue that the representative team is working on is improving the dress code and its enforcement. The dress code has changed recently to be more accommodating for different body types, cultures, identities, and clothing. However, the way that these new standards are enforced needs to be improved. The Senate and representatives are working to collect data on how teachers enforce the dress code, to see if there are different standards and levels of tolerance. Our goal is to ensure all students and staff understand the dress code, so our focus is to create resources that will support this, such as updating the code of behavior and dress code videos, and reviewing the enforcement of this policy. This will ensure a universal way to address this concern and make it fair for all students, regardless of gender, identity, or body type. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate your time and for giving me the chance to share the student representatives' plans for Prince William students. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Charlotte. We really appreciate the update. Next, we're moving on next to Dr. McDade, superintendent's time.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening. I want to begin this evening by acknowledging the sacrifices of Bridgewater College Campus Police Officer John Painter and Campus Safety Officer J.J. Jefferson. Both officers lost their lives yesterday protecting the students and staff at Bridgewater College during an active shooter situation. Our thoughts are with the family and friends of these brave men, as well as the Bridgewater College community. I am also thankful to our school resource officers and security personnel, who work each day to ensure our schools and our students are safe. Moving on to more positive news, you may have noticed the colorful banners, beautiful posters, personal artwork, and handwritten thank you letters created by our talented students. February is School Board Appreciation Month. The Virginia School Boards Association proclaims February as School Board Appreciation Month to salute the service of the almost 850 school board members in Virginia. It is an opportunity for school divisions and communities to build a stronger understanding of the crucial role school boards assume in a representative democracy. I share my appreciation for the important responsibilities of serving on a school board, especially during our challenging times, and I thank each one of our dedicated school board members for their commitment and engagement in service of our school division. February is also Black History Month. I encourage you to watch our website, social media, and the scoop for features from the division and our schools throughout February, as PWCS recognizes this annual celebration of achievements and heritage of African Americans. I would also like to mention that Crossing Guard Appreciation Day is February 9th. As we work collaboratively with our community to ensure our students arrive to and from school safely, I want to recognize and appreciate the critical role of our crossing guards. Before introducing the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge February 7th through February 11th as National School Counseling Week. As we all try to survive this difficult pandemic, it is increasingly evident how important it is to support the mental health of our students and staff. I appreciate each and every one of our school counselors and their efforts in supporting our schools. Thank you for your commitment to the well-being of our students. Mr. Chairman, this concludes our regular superintendent's report, and we are prepared to move to the presentation of the superintendent's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget and capital improvement program.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. So as a reminder for folks, we do this the same every year. We have a series of meetings coming up to go over the budget, public hearing, markup sessions. Tonight is the first night where the board members will receive the superintendent's proposed budget. So board members, as a quick reminder, while tonight is not the time to ask questions or make comments on the proposed 2223 budget, you will have opportunities to do so. Instead, you can provide your questions directly to John Wallingford, Chief Financial Officer, who will coordinate responses. Our public meeting on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget will be this coming Monday, February 7th at 6:00 p.m., held here in the school board meeting room. Individuals wishing to address the school board should notify the board clerk by phone at 703-791-8709, or by completing the Citizen Comment Time Request Form prior to noon on the day of the board meeting will be placed on the list of speakers. And again, speakers will be similar to the way we do it here with three minutes. At this point, Dr. McDade, I'll turn it over to you to present the fiscal 23 proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased tonight to present the fiscal year 2023 superintendent's budget proposal. I want to thank our Chief Financial Officer, John Wallingford, and our Budget Director, Kathleen Addison, their staff, along with the partnership of our entire leadership team for their hard work in leading the reinvention of our budget development process this year. Mr. Wallingford will provide further details on our budget proposal in just a moment, but first, I would like to share some exciting key takeaways. We began our budget development process by aligning to the priorities and outcomes outlined in our Vision 2025 Launching Thriving Futures Strategic Plan. Additionally, I met with every department where we collaboratively reviewed the existing budgets and identified opportunities for work we could stop in order to better align investments to our priorities and identify new opportunities to advance our strategic commitments. This was time-consuming for our staff, but was crucial in our ability to assure no stone goes unturned as we maximize every dollar in our budget to support students, teachers, and staff. First and foremost, this is a budget that is teacher and student-centric, with the bulk of our new investments going to support the classroom and our schools where they are needed most. As you know, I have visited every school this fall and met with hundreds of parents, staff, and students where I heard firsthand the needs of our school division. As a school division, we do not control our revenues up or down. We are fortunate this year to have strong state and county budgets that are crucial to our ability to fund our schools both adequately and equitably. The FY 2023 budget is a $1.5 billion budget, which represents an approximate 14% increase over fiscal year 2022. The centerpiece of this budget, and the single largest investment, is $60 million to provide a 7% average increase in pay for our staff. This critical investment recognizes the need to offer competitive pay and benefits as outlined in our strategic plan. I will provide further details on this in a moment, but first, I will walk through each of our four strategic commitments and highlight the major investments that this budget makes in each area. First is the core of our business, which is learning and achievement for all. Our work on this commitment is to provide equitable opportunities for all students to achieve at high levels, preparing all students for post-secondary education and the workforce, and ensuring all staff members support and challenge every student. As we've heard from our instructional staff, beyond their own pay and benefits, they urgently need more support in the classroom. This budget specifically includes a focus on our early learners and support for our special education teachers and students. To this end, this proposal includes hiring 88 full-time kindergarten teaching assistants to ensure every kindergarten classroom has a full-time assistant. Further, I am proposing 100 full-time teaching assistants for special education classrooms that will be allocated to schools based on programming and staffing needs to support our most vulnerable students. To further support our special education and as identified as a key resource in our strategic plan, we are also proposing the hiring of 13 assistive technology specialists. These experts are critical to our ability to ensure every student has the support needed to have their voice in their own education. An additional resource to support our schools and students is the addition of social workers and behavior specialists, which are desperately needed to address social and emotional learning and mental health and wellness for both students and staff. A key goal in our strategic plan is for 100% of students to have a post-secondary plan because we know that our job at PWCS does not end when we hand over the diploma on graduation day. To this end, we are proposing the addition of 15 career counselors, one for every traditional and non-traditional high school, who will play a key role in guiding students and families in the development of concrete post-secondary plans to secure their future after graduation. in the development of concrete post-secondary plans to secure their future after graduation. The theory of action behind our first strategic objective is that if all schools have high expectations and engage students through universal design for learning and rigorous problem-project-based learning, then every student will have the knowledge, skills, critical thinking, and digital tools needed to fully access advanced opportunities leading to higher levels of academic achievement. To deliver on this theory of action, we are proposing investments for academic support, including 13 instructional support positions to provide teachers with professional development and school-based coaching in the areas of math, science, social science, and literacy, as well as support for English learners and world language. These positions will help us develop and advance and deliver curriculum that are both inclusive and rigorous for every student. Earlier this school year, we shared with the school board a presentation on the state of gifted education in PWCS. Based on that data and recommendations from the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Gifted Education, we are funding 21 gifted program positions to advance our goal of every school having a full-time gifted program teacher by 2025. These positions will increase student access to gifted education programming. This budget will also make critical investments in our classroom technology infrastructure. As we are now a one-to-one school division, we must ensure we maintain this investment, as well as upgrade our classrooms where the technology has fallen behind. Many of our teachers are using interactive whiteboards or projectors that are more than seven years old, and this leads to equipment failures that disrupt instruction. This budget centralizes management of these assets so we can ensure technology adequacy and equity in every school moving forward. Also, in support of adequacy, we have included funding for our small schools to ensure that they meet the basic needs of their schools when per pupil funding may not be sufficient. Our next strategic commitment is positive climate and culture. This is our promise to provide a welcoming, supportive, and safe environment for teaching and learning. To support our schools, and again, tied to our strategic plan goals around positive climate and culture, we are proposing the hiring of 30 security specialists along with infrastructure upgrades of cameras and emergency systems. We also have included the hiring of an additional 14 nurses. As we know, the pandemic has placed a heavy burden on our school staff, and none more than our nurses, who have delivered exceptional service to our students and families throughout this challenging pandemic. This hiring will further bolster this critical role in an effort to reduce high student-to-nurse ratios. As we seek to ensure our schools are inclusive and safe for all students, we will continue supporting the No Place For Hate program, as well as adding support positions in handling student discipline cases. Lastly, creating sustainable facilities and reducing energy consumption continue to be a division focus, and this budget adds resources to support these initiatives. Our schools exist to serve students and families in partnership. Family and community engagement represents the commitment to build collaborative, meaningful partnerships, and trusting relationships to foster the success of all students. We also believe involvement of the family in their child's education is crucial. This should be true for every family. However, as a large school division, navigating the multitude of resources can be daunting, especially for those families that may speak a language other than English. As such, we are proposing ramping up our family liaison program with the addition of 35 parent liaisons, with the long-term goal of having at least one parent liaison for every school in the next four years. We are also adding five additional social worker positions and additional language translations support. Our final commitment is organizational coherence. This represents the conscious commitment to align the entire school division as one team, united in a singular commitment to support all schools, students, and families. In supporting our teachers, administrators, and support employees, and aligned to our strategic priority to provide regionally competitive wages, the core of our budget proposal is an investment of $61 million to provide employees a 4.2% cost-of-living adjustment and a step increase. This will equate to a 7% average increase for most employees. Overall, the cost of this investment is offset by a vacancy savings of $20 million. We will also be investing an additional $20 million to make market-based improvements to our certified and instructional pay scales and our classified pay scales. As a result of these adjustments, our salaries will be more competitive. These increases will be targeted primarily at early and mid-career steps on our scale, where we are seeing the least parity with other school divisions with whom we compete for talent. This means some instructional and certified staff will see increases above 7%. This proposal will also keep healthcare premiums low despite increasing claims and healthcare costs. The proposal includes a modest 2% increase to employee premiums in our division's self-insurance plan administered by Anthem. This equates to about an additional $10 per month for the Family Anthem HMO plan. However, Kaiser has established a rate that will result in a 14% increase, or about $73 additional per month for the Kaiser HMO plan. It is important to note that Kaiser's overall premium cost will still be lower than Anthem. Our principals are also being asked to do more than ever. They must be instructional leaders, mediators, and they must navigate the ongoing burden of the pandemic. Recognizing the enormous challenge of this role, we are adding 26 assistant principal positions to further support the work of our building leaders and lower the student-to-assistant principal ratio. The strategic plan addresses the need for organizational coherence. This means that we, as an organization, are all headed in the same direction and that every resource we have is dedicated to supporting the classroom. This includes support positions, which are crucial to the work of our schools, and let me explain why. As you've heard me say, with the new positions proposed today, in addition to our annual hiring needs, we have a substantial amount of hiring needed at the local school level. For every hire at the school, there comes the need to recruit, onboard, equip, and pay these new employees. We strive to keep that support as efficient as possible. However, when that support becomes too thin, then efficiency decreases. This means if we do not have the human resources, finance, transportation, or technology staff to support our schools, then we have negative impacts. This can result in delayed hiring, negative customer service for our families, leaders, or staff, and infrastructure breakdowns. For example, I have continuously heard throughout this year from our school leaders regarding the impact of our understaffed support offices. This includes the inability to be competitive in filling key positions and even losing top talent as a result of delays caused by substantial workloads. To meet the high demand of customer service we've outlined in Vision 2025 and ensure fiscal responsibility, it is necessary for us to adequately resource departments that are woefully understaffed today. This is especially true for our finance and human resource departments. In just a moment, I will ask Mr. Wallingford, along with other key members of the leadership team, to share further details of our proposal. But before I do, I want to bring us back to our strategic objective 4.3, that PWCS will ensure that our strategic priorities are driving our investments. In our theory of action, that if we align our budgeted resources with our strategic priorities, then we will ensure that every student is provided equitable access to facilities, technology, and curriculum, enabling improved student outcomes and experiences. This budget is exceptionally strong. We have an opportunity to advance the necessary work of supporting our students by investing in our classrooms, our schools, and our staff. This is a budget that both the school board and the community can be proud of. Thank you for your support and consideration of our proposal, and I would like to now ask our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. John Wallingford, to provide additional details on the fiscal year 23 proposed budget.
Dr. McDade, thank you for that introduction. Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. McDade. The first thing I'd like to say before we get into the numbers is that it's been both a pleasure and a challenge working with Dr. McDade over the past several months and putting this budget together. It is a change in process for us, and I have to say that I am excited to present this budget to you tonight. It is a very good outcome for the school division. So, you're familiar with some of these slides. You'll see over the next couple of slides. These two donuts used to be pies, but what you see is a depiction of both where the money comes from and where the money goes to. And on the left, where it comes from, and you may be familiar with this, we see roughly 50% of our funding coming from the state and 50% coming from the county. Like Dr. McDade mentioned earlier, we have very little control over these numbers, but this year, they have been just fantastic. Where does the money go to? Roughly 80% of our money goes towards instruction into the schools. Unlike many localities in Virginia, we do have a very healthy capital improvement plan. We spend a fair amount on our schools because we are growing, not as rapidly as we have in the past, but we do spend more than most school divisions on our CIP. To the next slide, what you'll see here is two items. The first, on the left, is our expected enrollment growth over the next several years. You can see the real deflection between 19, 20, and 21 to the left of this chart, and we were expecting growth in the range of 400 to 700 students per year going out from 2003 out into the future. The slide to the right is a bar chart you've seen, and what it really does is it depicts the enrollment growth in different populations in the division over the past five years. This slide is different than it's been in the past, and of note is the bottom bar, where you see total enrollment growth over the past five years has been just a hair over 0%, so little, in fact, that the chart shows zero. Those other populations are growing at rates between 8 and almost 20%, and the important thing to note here is that those populations are more expensive populations for us to educate, and therefore, even though our total growth over the past years is flat, our costs continue to increase. The next slide, and this is what excites me a great deal, I have to share with you. Starting in 2009, and you've seen this slide before, starting in 2009, if you take a look at the bottom line, that is our per pupil expenditure adjusted for inflation. And you can see that even in the current fiscal year, our per pupil expenditure, again, adjusted for inflation, is less than it was in 2009. This year, this coming year, fiscal '23, you'll notice that our per pupil expenditure, again, adjusted for inflation, actually finally exceeds the number we had in fiscal 2009. Very good news. The top line are the same numbers unadjusted.
Mr. Wallingford, just specifically on that, just so everyone understands, that 11,389 is higher than the 10,776. That's basically what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. For the first time, we're back up over 2009 levels.
That's correct. Again, very good news. The top line are the same numbers, this time unadjusted for inflation, and the important thing to note here...
John, can you... Sorry, Mr. Wallingford.
Yes, sir.
Board members have questions on that again. Just go over what you mean again by the adjusted inflation rate. So if you look at the orange line, in 2009, we used to receive $10,776 per pupil, correct?
That is correct.
That was in 2009. When the recession hit, you know, that continued to go down, and state revenues continued to go down, and we, for the first time this year, are going to be at $11,389, which is the first time we're higher than we were on adjusted inflation rates per pupil since 2009.
That is correct.
Okay.
So the top line shows our unadjusted or nominal per pupil expenditures, and what you can see, the thing of note here really is those last two years. What you see is an increase in per pupil expenditures of roughly $1,800 per student. That's a substantial increase year over year. And when we get to the last slide in this presentation, we'll walk through the revenue numbers, and you'll see what that 1,800 per pupil increase means. So, here's the recap of revenue, and I'm just going to take you to the bottom right-hand corner. Take a look at the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. What you see is $173 million increase year over year in revenue to Prince William County Schools, or roughly a 14% increase. This is a substantial number. It's greater than we've ever experienced. And so I'll walk through the individual categories. The most too important, again, are the county and state revenues, and you can see that county revenues, we expect those to be up about $50 million year over year. $50 million year over year is a typical total increase. This is just from county revenues, $50 million. The next number you see is about $120 million, and that's an increase in our state revenue streams, again, from fiscal '22 to fiscal '23. As you're aware, the General Assembly is meeting right now, and they're discussing all kinds of things that may change these numbers. They may reduce them, may increase them, in fact, and this is something that happens every year. The General Assembly typically is doing their work while we're proposing and working on our budgets. So, in both of those categories, we expect to see changes between now and the time when you adopt our budget and send it to the County Board of Supervisors for adoption. This final slide just walks through the calendar that we have laid out before us for the next couple of months. I'm not going to walk through every single one of these. I'll point out the important dates. The last date is the date that the Board of County Supervisors approves our budget. That's on the 26th. Tax rates, while I haven't talked about tax rates tonight, tax rates theoretically will be set on April 12th, and that's when we'll have a good feel of what our county revenues are, and at that point, if we have to make any adjustments, if they're large, if they're large enough, we'll bring those back to this board. Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, as I pointed out before... Dr. McDade, did you have any further comments?
No, that concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
I'll ask board members to make comments, restrict questions for email and later, but certainly you can make comments about the budget. Ms. Williams, you have your hand up? Oh, Ms. Jessie.
First of all, I think the budget is just a phenomenal budget, and the items that are exciting to me, one, number one for me, is that for the first time, our per pupil expenditure, I think that is phenomenal. The 7% increase in staff pay, the special education assistance, kindergarten assistance, because if you work with kindergartners, you know you need a second person in the room at all times, because kindergartners do what they do. The career counselors, very excited about that because I think that aligns with the whole looking at what happens to kids as they prepare for college and after college. The small school supplement, I think, is also something that is exciting to me. I would like for us to look at transient schools. I'm sure we'll get a chance to give more specific input, but I worked in a very transient school, so my separate, my front office staff was, the needs were different because we were entering data every single day. The nurses, I'm really very excited about the nurses, and maybe down the road, we can consider some assistance for, a health assistance. I think it depends on the pandemic, but I just wanted to highlight some of the things in the budget that, as I read it, I was excited about. I'm not sure I fully understand all the aids, but the ELL population, when I looked at the data, that's something that we need to consider, and also the science, our science scores. When we looked at, when I looked at quality profile, it's the only group of scores where we're lower than the state in our science performance. And I think in this meeting and other meetings, I asked for a countdown on which schools had science labs, because we ask people to do hands-on and project-based learning kinds of activities. I think they need labs. There are schools in this county that have five labs, and there are schools in this county that have no, no labs at all, and most of those schools are Title I schools. So that's something that perhaps in the CIP, we can address, but overall, this, I think, is an exciting budget, and I... But overall, this, I think, is an exciting budget, and I know that the teachers and principals will be very excited. The other item, the front office staff, where they assist, we're getting assistant principals. I'd like for you guys to look at whether or not we can provide registrars or look at the principal secretaries, because the principal secretaries have multiple responsibilities. So that's just my limited input. Of course, I sent them an epistle today, but those were just my, off the review of some of the data that I sent in to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have two questions, but they can be answered, and I think it's worth repeating. So if Mr. Wallingford doesn't mind, if you could just address the general public, because I think this will come up repeatedly through the budget season, and it was also brought up this evening, the difference between our operational budget and our pandemic funding, because I think most of the public believes that our operational funding and budget is the same as federal funding or wherever we get our pandemic relief from. And I think since we're starting this discussion this evening, we should start it off with some clarity, if you don't mind, sir.
So, Mrs. Williams, that's a very good question. Our operational budget does not include federal pandemic aid that we've received over the past approximately two years. That money has been added to the budget mid-year in each of the last two years. This budget that you've received this evening does not include that pandemic aid. Those dollars are in the current year budget and will be rolled forward into the new year. So those are not in these numbers.
Thank you. And I also, if you don't mind, because you're our money man, and I think this is helpful for our public to understand, our operational budget is ours. We make the decisions on how we spend the money as a school division, board, what have you. But when it comes to pandemic relief and funding that we received for the pandemic, that money is often, if not always, encumbered with restrictions or requirements or certain methodology on how it's spent. So for example, you know, if we get $5 million, and in relation to pandemic, it often comes with you must buy XYZ, or you must spend on XYZ, and it's not generally non-renewable funding, which is different than our operational budget. If you could address that, please, sir.
Absolutely. Again, a very good question. Our operating budget is our budget. This board approves it, sends it to the Board of County Supervisors, and they approve it in lump sum. They don't direct how it's spent. That's direction that comes from Dr. McDade and this board. The dollars that we receive from the federal government, both standard federal formula aid, Title I, Title 6B, and pandemic money, all of those dollars have all kinds of constraints placed on them, particularly the most recent pandemic money we've received in the form of SIR III funding. The effort to manage that money is substantially greater than the other dollars, because all the restrictions that the federal government and the state government has placed on those, including the kinds of things that we can spend, the timelines during which we can spend them, a great deal of constraints, additional audit requirements layered on top of the standard audit requirement. So your assertion is precisely correct. Those dollars, we have some control over, but there's a great deal of control placed on us by both the federal and state government.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And my last comment is along the same. You mentioned something in the presentation that I think bears repeating, because it is significant into our operation, and that is, if you could just repeat why we mention specific student populations with specifically free and reduced lunch, special education, and ELL students, because I think the public tends to see that maybe our enrollment numbers are not going up. So why do we spend more money, and why is it important that we specially highlight those populations in our budget?
Again, thank you for the question, a very good one. So you're absolutely right. Our total population growth has moderated a great deal over the past several years, but our growth in those categories that you mentioned has not. This year, obviously because of the pandemic, is an odd year, but even during that, those three populations that you mentioned have continued to grow at pretty substantial rates. Each one of those populations requires additional funding in order to provide them the world-class education that Prince William County provides for students. So even in an environment where the total population is relatively flat or just slightly increasing, our cost to instruct students, to provide instruction to students continues to grow.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Wallingford.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to move into my comment portion. I don't have anything else to ask you. But I do want to say, I appreciate you coming up here to state that again. It goes directly to my comment, because the thing about this budget that is most impactful for me, or one thing that is most impactful, is the acknowledgement that we need additional staffing. And a lot of times, we hear this rhetoric of, well, the school division doesn't spend money in the classroom, but the staffing is part of the classroom. If you don't have special education teachers, if you don't have gifted teachers, if you don't have aides, you're not spending money in the classroom because there's no one there to do that job. If you don't have administrators to help those, support those individuals who are directly in the face of our students, our teachers and our support staff aren't getting what they need in order to do their job. So I just really want to thank Dr. McDade and her staff, because this budget, to me, encompasses many of the things I have advocated and fought for my entire time on the school board. It's almost as if you were here before you were here, which shows me your dedication to listening, not only to board members, but to members of the public and the community, your own staff, and students. It's reflected in this budget. It aligns with our strategic vision, which directly speaks to organizational coherence. You shouldn't have a budget that's separate in its implementation from what we said we're going to do. It's no longer a matter of having to repeat the budget is our priority. It clearly states it is our priority, and it aligns with our strategic plan, which is just the way it should be, frankly. I am exceptionally excited to see our investment in our gifted teachers and gifted programming. So many students are missed by that, and we don't have enough gifted teachers who walk in the school division to support our students, who come in all shapes and sizes. We shouldn't have teachers shared between schools or running on carts. And then with the advancement of our push-in, where we have gifted teachers who come into the classrooms, whether they're recognized gifted students or not, to provide programming, I think this will alleviate the burden on some of those staff. This budget is just absolutely amazing, and I appreciate that while we have the additional funding, not only from a county but on the state level, that we're taking advantage of that, and we're doing so in a way that is smart and strategic. I hope that the public understands that this is just the first of many conversations, and conversations take many forms when it comes to public dialogue with school divisions. I also appreciate, especially from my district, the investment in parent liaisons. I represent a district that has a high immigrant population, and we speak many languages. And it's important that those parents feel that they are part of their child's academic process, and they're able to communicate with the school in a way that's meaningful. I can't thank you enough for that. I also noticed that there was, in addition, for our transportation liaisons, I think that will significantly reduce the amount of parents who are frustrated with the WhatsApp bus app, or trying to call transportation, or our transportation staff who are limited in their numbers, trying to run buses and dispatch, and communicate with parents who are frustrated because they can't find the bus, or the bus is late, or whatever the case may be. I think adding another layer to support our transportation part, our transportation division is a smart investment. I'm just overall pleased that I don't have to, for the first time, sit on this board, worry about whether or not we're going to pay for basic things for our students, such as PSATs. That horrible critical unmet needs list has gone away because it's already incorporated in what this budget is made up of. So I just want to say that I'm very excited about this budget. I hope indeed that it does pass, and I appreciate your active listening, not only to this board but to members of the community. It is truly an honor to be serving right now and discussing a budget. I have never been excited about a budget that was former School Board Member Guild Trenum's role. So this is a new thing for me, but it is, I understand why he felt like that now. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. When it comes to the, because I forgot we're doing budget and CIP, and I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. Jessie said, I know that the majority of the schools that do not have science labs are in Title I schools, which are in my district. They're not all in my district, but almost every school except for one in my district is a Title I school. And I would appreciate if we could look at that in our CIP and come up with a way to correct that, because it's a matter of equity for all of the students who attend those schools. And the push for STEM is there, and it would be nice if those students could have the same access as other students to that learning curriculum. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will just say, it's obvious that there's been a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this, and its presentation is excellent, the organization, the correlation with the strategic plan. I can see that this is a very professional document. I want to congratulate, not congratulate, but applaud all of those who worked on it. The layout, you know, it's a very good presentation tonight. I am looking forward to public comment and feedback on this, and so I'm interested to hear what people think. It's got a lot of things in here that are some of my highest priorities, especially opportunities for student academic excellence and seeing a real investment of resources into our classrooms. And also increasing our competitive advantage in the marketplace for our professionals, attracting and retaining the highest quality workforce that we can afford. And I also, you know, want to make sure we do all of this in a way that is fiscally responsible with an eye towards stewardship and good financial stewardship. So I appreciate the hard work on this, and I'm looking forward to hearing public comment, the budget hearings, and the work sessions, and everything else. Thank you.
Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was really happy to see in the budget that there were, they're not little things, the addition of kindergarten teacher assistance and extra teacher assistance for special education. One of the things that we keep hearing over and over and over from many different teachers is how much is on their plates and what can we take off of them, take off of their plates for them. So I know just those two categories alone are going to go a long way, and I look forward to hearing also from our staff as we move forward, just what else is going to be helpful. I know that the school, the high school counselors have talked a lot about the many job duties that they have. So hopefully, adding the career counselors is going to be a little bit of that relief. We've got more mental health put into this budget, which is still very, very, very important. So all of those things with an eye to making things better for our students, making sure our staff have more support is, I'm just really happy to see how responsive the division was this year, and that we've got, like Ms. Wall said, you know, we want to be good stewards of our budget. So all of this is going in support of our students, but we also need to take care of our staff as well. So thank you for keeping all those things in line. I'm a little jealous about the potential pay raise here. Not all districts do it, so, but yeah. So thank you for all the work that the staff has put in.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Since we have so many other sessions and work things coming up, I'm going to just keep this very minimal, and I'm also paying a graphic designer to make some really nice flashy things of what's coming to the Potomac District. So, but I'm very grateful for some of the projects. It's about being good stewards for our community and representing the needs of the Potomac District. So when you find out that the tennis courts are dilapidated at one of your high schools, you take action. When you find out one of your tracks is falling apart, whereas the other school just got a brand-new one, you have to take action. So I appreciate the responsiveness and the support from the division to help assist me where my constituents are looking for things. For many years, the colleagues on the board know, I've championed to make sure we have a full-time military liaison in our schools, and we've always been able to supplement that .5 with the federal grants and subsidize that. This year, that grant is gone, so we are able to do the full-time now employee on our end. So I'm very thankful for that, for the military families. A lot of us have advocated for kindergarten aids to make sure they're in every room. As a special needs parents, the more special needs assistance in these classrooms is critical. I think it's now a matter of finding them on the market and making sure we can compete and recruit the best people to be in our classrooms. And then, you know, I think the counselors were mentioned. Last year, I tried adding 10 at the last minute in a markup session, and it didn't happen, but we do have 15 career counselors. And even for high schools, I know that already have a career counselor, we're actually giving them now the ability and the flexibility now to have another counselor on their staff to help reduce those caseloads. So it's just fantastic. Dumfries, you know, small school, very tiny school, I think one of the smallest actually in the county, having that supplemental funding for a small school budget to help add, and things like liaisons or other additional costs that they're not able to potentially get to other schools in my district or in other districts. So overall, very pleased. I can, you know, go on and on, but I just wanted to hit and touch on those highlights there, and very thankful for the staff, everyone, Mr. Wallingford, Mr. Chiroci, everyone that contributed, the entire team, to make this happen. So I'm very thankful. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston, did you have anything to add? Okay. We'll go to Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I don't want to repeat what my board members have said today, because I share some of the excitement. There are a number of priorities in here that I'm very excited about, including the instructional assistance and the TAs for kindergarten classrooms. But what I am looking forward to is the process and the community involvement over the next few weeks, and our collaboration with Dr. McDade's team, and just all the time you've taken so far to answer questions. And then I know there's going to be a 10 more questions coming, so I'm just very thankful for everybody's time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that leaves me. Well, first off, I want to congratulate the entire finance team, Dr. McDade. This is a record budget. This, you know, while I share the frustrations of many folks who came here to speak on a variety of topics this evening, I, like many, have four children, three in the school system now, one in college, all dealing with, you know, pandemic concerns, frustrations, and it has been a challenging two years. Today is Groundhog Day. It's like, this was like this last year at this time. And so, you know, I'm hoping next year is going to be the future is much brighter. This budget paints a much brighter picture for the whole of this county. I think it is absolutely stunning that we've been able to deliver a 7% raise across the division on average. The competitive salary adjustments are fantastic. This is on top of, my first year, a 4.8% raise, a 4.8% raise, the second year I've been on this board, 2.4 in the pandemic, which should have been a 4.8, but we cut for the pandemic, 5.0 last year and 7 this year, and we are still behind other school divisions in the region for salary. But we are making some real progress, and the future is bright. Everyone should remember that. Be very excited about that. The student success aspects of this and the learning achievement for all the kindergarten TAs, we know that when we went to full-day kindergarten, that had a dramatic impact on the success of our students and graduation rates. Adding TAs to every single kindergarten class is absolutely critical and may have similar results moving forward. I think beefing up our science departments, our science support here at the central office for our division, as you heard from many, many school board members, is very important as we move to more STEM-focused concerns. We have been very, you know, really behind in, and I think, an area that has desperately needed work for many years, and I think we're going to get some added support there, and I'm excited about that. Space and infrastructure, outstanding. Space and infrastructure, outstanding capital improvement plan continues to address my concerns of safety and security. We're looking at more counselors, continuing to improve our ratios. And, you know, overall, this is an outstanding budget. I think everyone should remember, though, we have a number of factors that will fund this budget. Factor one is what happens in Richmond. The General Assembly is looking at the proposed Governor Northam's budget. They're going to make some changes to the budget. Governor Yonkin will then go ahead and sign a budget that gets through the Assembly. Based on what we're hearing from our folks down there, there is considerable interest in making sure schools get funded at adequate levels, and I appreciate the work of all the representatives in Richmond as they continue to work on this. And it will be critical to determine what our final budget will look like. Secondly, the county, Board of County Supervisors will vote on their commitment to the school division in a number of different ways, and we'll see what their revenues look like as well, and that's going to be important. And final adjustments will be made accordingly over the next couple of months as we go through different work sessions and meet with the Board of County Supervisors. It is important for all of us to remember that, you know, as pointed out by a number of speakers, you know, diversity of a tax base is critical to the success of the school division. Loudoun County, for example, gets about $300 million to $400 million just from data centers alone to fund about $2 billion, $2.25 billion school budget. We have about $1.5 billion, $1.6 billion school budget, and we're getting currently in the, I think, $30 million to $60 million range from data centers. And there are significant areas where we can achieve more revenues for our schools, less on the backs of our property owners and families and citizens, but more on diversifying the tax base and looking for revenue streams from, whether it's data centers, whether it's other creative ways to increase revenue sources. And I know the Board of County Supervisors are looking at all of them, and I wish them the best as they make those decisions and recognize that those decisions will have a direct impact on our ability to achieve our strategic plan, which many of our Board of County Supervisor members were a part of in discussions on the plan, and it is critical. So, again, thank you all. This is a historic budget, a historic evening for Prince William County schools. These are numbers we've never seen before. These are numbers we're going to continue to work towards, and as a continued commitment over the course of my four years and now fifth budget, you know, we will continue to spend this money as wisely as possible and for the benefit of every single student we have in this division. So with that, Dr. McDade, do you have anything further to add?
I just want to close really by saying thank you to the entire board for your consideration, for allowing us to present this proposed budget this evening, as well as for your consideration. I just want to echo something that you said, Mr. Chairman. This really is a bright spot as we continue to deal with so many of the challenges with the pandemic and things that might be debatable. I think the one thing that's not debatable is that this budget contains all of the necessary resources and investments that are needed to move this division forward, whether it be the competitive wages so that we can retain our talented staff, to the desperately-needed resources that are being provided directly to the classroom. But most importantly, we now have a comprehensive strategic plan that will ensure that our priorities drive our investments in this school division. So I could not be more proud and look forward to continued dialogue around the budget and your consideration for the proposed FY '23 budget. Thank you so much.
Wonderful, Dr. McDade. Okay. Any other board members have any other comments? I think with that, we can move on next to, I've lost my place on the screen. What's next, folks? What is that? That is, oh, okay, Directive for Prevailing Wage. Ms. Argarpur, can you, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson. I'm getting used to my old vice chair.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that at the first school board meeting in March, the Prince William County School Board be provided by the superintendent and the office of the Division Council with information regarding the impact of Virginia's prevailing wage law on Prince William County schools. Including any resolutions and/or policy changes necessary should the board vote to implement a similar requirement for construction contracts with the Prince William County Public Schools.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Argarpur.
My second.
Okay. Any discussion?
You know, I'll go first then, here. This is, there are some laws that have been changed regarding prevailing wage and looking at what our vendors and contractors pay their employees, their workers. And from my standpoint, from a personal standpoint, and some of the work I've done at the University of Virginia, we've implemented these kinds of changes already, and, you know, they are very positive in an environment like Northern Virginia, I suspect, and I'll be interested to know as the staff brings back, where are we on the wage scale relative to other regions for how we're paying our workers? We want to make sure that everyone, just like in our division, is paid well, and we're trying to increase that. Remind everyone that Forbes Magazine rated Prince William County Schools as the number-one school division to work for last year. And so in a continued commitment to be a good member of the community, I am very supportive of the beginning of this effort to look at the prevailing wage effort. Next, anybody have any other comments to add? Okay. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Okay. Next, we're going to update, oh, Ms. Lori Williams, our Chair of the Governor's School at Innovation Park Board. She will give us an update this evening on the happenings at the Governor's School.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, or Chairman Latif. The Governor's School Board last met in December. We received an informational update on students, their academic progress, what supports were being put in place or already in existing in place to support their mental health and academic progress. I am pleased to report that we do have a very strong network of supports in place for those students. The PTA, or PTSO, excuse me, because there's a difference, has some planned study sessions to help additionally support our students' academic progress. The budget for the upcoming school year was approved unanimously, and the next meeting will be held on February 17th at the Governor's School at Innovation Park. Thank you.
Excellent. At this point, I think we move to board matters. I don't know where I started last time. I think I started, where'd I start with, Ms.? Last time, okay, we'll go to Ms. Jessie of the Okaquan District.
First of all, I want to thank all the principals. I have been in contact with all of them and they, and staff in all of my schools. In fact, I called them last week to talk about the budget, and I want you to know, Dr. McDade, that they said they really appreciated the fact that you involved them in that input session. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I am on the Students for Challenging Schools Environmental Representative for V S B A, and we look at all the data, especially in challenging schools. And it is actually frightening when we look at some of the school districts. Our school district is really not, we made, we've made some, we have had some significant losses, but there are school systems in the state of Virginia that have gone from 80% pass rate to 0% pass rate in some of those lower-income schools. And even in our school system, if you look at the data, if you go to Quality Profile and look at some of our ELL data, it's a lot of work. So I'm on another committee, which is the Federal Review Committee, and on Friday, we spent a full day talking to various representatives, and I had an opportunity to talk to Governor Warner and, I mean, not Governor Warner, Senator Warner, and also to Senator Kane. And we, one of the, I asked, my question for us, we got this money from various sources. My question was, what are we going to do with the Build Back Better? And my number-one priority was that we get universal pre-K. And it looks like that is something that they're looking at, because I think if, as we look at the, we get kindergarten going, and then we get a universal pre-K through the federal government, I think it's going to mean a lot. So those are my report items for the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to start out to, while tonight's has been mostly about budget and strategic plan, and just kind of remind everyone that Virginia is still fifth in the nation for excellence in schools. Doesn't seem to be the dominant rhetoric out there, but we aren't a horrible school division. We aren't horrible in our state rankings. We don't spend enough time talking about how good of a job we do, and I think that's extremely important in this day and age when our teachers are bearing the brunt of the rhetoric that is out there. I also want to talk about parental involvement and remind everybody in the public that there's parental involvement in academics at every level. You have opportunities to comment on state, at the state level, VDOE, volunteers on boards and commissions, with, at your local level, emailing, calling, reaching out to your representative, commenting on whatever the topic is of the month, especially here in Prince William County schools. We often have comment forms that are available for the public to use, which are also translated in a plethora of languages, so any and all have the opportunity to provide feedback as well as opportunities in your student's school. There is no shortage or ever of demand for volunteers or feedback in your school division. I have yet to meet a teacher who has had to turn away volunteers because there's been so many. So I would encourage parents to continue to work with their school and the school division and provide as much feedback as they would feel or see fit. I also want to remind anyone in the Woodbridge District, I am looking actively to appoint a member to the Joint Environmental Task Force that was just started up, so if you're interested, please reach out for that. I would love to have someone who, of course, is interested in environment to participate on that task force. And in my last 60 seconds, I just want to give a nod to Black History in Prince William County. We have, sitting on this dais, a history maker in our presence with Dr. McDade, who was the first African-American, a female African-American superintendent in Prince William County Schools' history. Not too long ago, only a mere 26 years ago, we had the first elected African-American in Prince William County, and that was Mr. John Harper. Also, in addition to that, our four courageous four who integrated Prince William County Schools, Benny Fitzgerald, Mary Porter, Zella Brown, Maxine Coleman. And I also, sitting next to me, have the longest-serving, most popular African-American, former principal, now board member. We have history live in the making here in Prince William County and Black History, and I just want to say how much I appreciate that and encourage our public to continue to make history and honor those who have. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start out my comments, because I always run out of time, with talking about an event that I attended at Bull Run Middle School this weekend. It was the VEX Robotics Middle School Western Qualifier, and it was held under the direction of Denise Carroll and hosted by the team there at Bull Run by Mr. Oppenheimer and other great, and other great supporters of robotics. There were a lot of teams that qualified for the state competition, and Potomac Shores Middle School was there to compete in their very first tournament. They're not a school from my division, but their principal used to be a principal at Reagan, and it's a brand-new middle school, and so it was really fun and exciting for them to compete in their very first event. One of the silver linings of the pandemic is the increased involvement of parents in education and watching what we're doing and getting involved. And I, well, I did not ask people to come here tonight or solicit their support. I do appreciate hearing from parent voice. And what we witnessed tonight was authentic engagement on issues that they care deeply about. And as I have said all along throughout the pandemic, every policy has a cost. There is always a balance of benefits and harms. I've spoken on this numerous times, especially early on when we were trying to open schools. We have got to do a better job of balancing the benefits and the harms. Health is more than the absence of COVID. It is time to appropriately balance the risks to children's health in the broadest term. Reclaiming normal life for our kids is the best way to support and protect them. I think a lot of people don't realize how awful the pandemic has been on kids. Now, kids are patient, they are resilient, they do mostly what they're told, they're very good at that. They have suffered the greatest impact. There has been a real impact on kids. We see it in the educational data. We will see it in our social and emotional data for years to come. You know, families are tired, the pandemic has taken a toll, but it's not just on families, it's also on our teachers, our principals, our nurses, and others. It's just been tough having to enforce policies not of their making. As I have visited with a number of principals from the Gainesville District, that's helped me to see the perspective more, because I can't, you know, get into the schools and really see what's going on, but just listening to their, listening to them has been really valuable to me and has informed my perspective. I think we need to not lose sight of the need to adapt as conditions change, as they do and as they will. We must be willing to reevaluate our balance of risks and benefits of our policies. We must be responsive to the families who support our schools. We must be responsive to the teachers who teach our kids. And with that, I say good night.
Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. To Ms. Wall's point, you know, I do agree with her. Those of you who came tonight to talk about how you feel about the testing requirements, you're right, we did make a decision back in September, and I have been thinking quite a bit about what has changed since then. I have been thinking about it. I have a lot of intellectual curiosity, and so, you know, I have been making sure that I'm listening, but also making sure that we really reflect on what we've done. It's part of education, right? We do something, we reflect on it, we make sure that we are on the right path. So those of you who came tonight, you know, I am listening. Want to talk a little bit about the Coles District here. I went to the first jazz concert at Colgan High School that they've had since 2020, I think, and it was fantastic. They did a great job. There were, it just, oh, man, it was just a great concert. I can't wait for the next one. I think they said that one's coming in May. Congratulations to the students at Osmond Park High School, they're Honor Society inductees. Great job. I know it's been hard through this pandemic. You guys are sticking with your academics and you're getting the work done, and you're being honored for doing so. Parkside Middle Robotics did a great job this weekend. Apparently, they got, what, three out of five of their teams are moving on to states, and one, Team C, won an excellence award. I went to V S B A last week with, was it, Ms. Williams, Ms. Wall, and Dr. McDade, and got to hear from different people in Richmond. We met with our different legislators to talk about our legislative priorities, making sure that Prince William County was represented. We got to talk to actually quite a few of them, which was really nice. I want to say also to any teacher that had my, I have three daughters, two are out of school, and one is, she can graduate this year, she's a junior, though, so we'll see what happens. You know, I can't raise my kids without a good, solid school behind them. The fact that we've been with Prince William County Schools the entire time, from kindergarten till my kids graduate, the teachers have taken care of my kids. They have fostered this love of learning with my daughters, and the principals have been supportive, making sure the right programs are in the schools. Anytime I've had concerns, the counseling staff has been there, and I just from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. I think you guys have done a great job. You're continuing to do a great job. Dr. Latif, I guess I'm supposed to say something really witty about masks and vaccines, but I think I'm going to leave that for right now. Why don't we just, we're going to stay safe, we're going to take care of our families and our friends, we're going to make sure that we're caring for each other. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Argarpur. You can't always wash your hands. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. McDade, for the presentation of the budget and, of course, adopting the strategic plan. With certain things being said, you know, from day one, I joined Dr. Latif and Ms. Wall with trying continuously to bring our kids back to school since July 15th of 2020, at a quicker time than Dr. Walts had recommended. It was, we see the long-term impacts, I think, of some of those decisions, and I think, you know, now- decisions. And I think, you know, now we have to look, and a couple lines were said about being adaptable as the climate changes and reevaluating policies from where we're at today. There were a lot of great points shared tonight, not just on, you know, what we heard about the testing, but also about the strategic plan in the budget. I thought that was great to hear some of that. And I'm obviously considering a lot of that information when it comes to school visits. So I wanted to say that first. I also want to add that, you know, again, another plug for our nurses. I think it's great that we're hiring more nurses or proposing to hire more nurses in the budgets. But I would still like to see us look at other options for helping and supporting our existing nurses right now in this pandemic. So, visitations, and what I did the last two weeks. So on, I almost said July 21st. January 21st, visited several classrooms at Forest Park, attended a lot of those classes, and saw a lot of great things happen. On the 25th, I went to the Potomac Boys Basketball Game. Close game, lost to Freedom High School, but still great to be there. On 1/28, I attended and was invited to the faculty breakfast on our, the teacher planning and PD day at Forest Park High School, and had the chance to speak with teachers there. On 1/29, my favorite event of the year, I should say this, my plug, is attending the Forest Park Plays conducted and done by my wife, the Forest Park Drama Teacher. That was a great play. After the play, I quickly served as a helper, I guess kind of a de facto chaperone at the Forest Park Senior Snowball Dance. It was great to see all the kids back to dances in person. And I think it was great to see the kids' excitement there. On 1/31, Ashland had STEM Day in Ashland Elementary. So during my lunch, I was able to visit Ashland, toured four different grade levels, and looked at the projects that the kids were doing. So it's great to always be there. And then last night, I went to another Potomac High School basketball game. Sad loss, but still good to be there and good to get out and just kind of live life normally. So, anyways, so thank you, everyone. Have a great day, night.
Ms. Ralston?
Pass.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. All right. Well, that leaves me. Oh, no, I'm sorry. God, I do this every time. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I also participated in VSBA, but it was online. And I was fortunate to be invited to Unity Read yesterday. I was invited to attend the Assembly during flex time, where the speaker talked about mental health. I attended a proactive circle with students and a teacher, and a breakout session with staff. Thank you to Ms. Anderson for showing me around yesterday and for the time teachers took to meet with me. It was a wonderfully welcoming day, and it was great to spend time with the Lions. Next week is School Counselors Week, and I want to take a moment and thank again our school counselors. I believe the Schools Counseling Week theme is "Better Together." Thank you, school counselors, for everything you do for your students, in some cases, that. The tools you bring are invaluable, and your impact felt beyond school walls. Our schools are truly better because of your knowledge, experience, commitment, and compassion. I look forward to recognizing Ms. Simpson and Ms. Reeves for Board Appreciation Week. And I also extend my gratitude to the school crossing guards. Please know I continue to listen and read all emails, and thank parents for coming every meeting. I encourage leaders today to lead with love and acceptance, to create unity and conversations, that I show true intent and model kindness. Many members of our staff breathe and live education. I see this in all staff members, from custodians to itinerant to Kelly leadership. My perspective is that of a teacher, so I'm just going to talk about why I teach today, because I know many share our thoughts. I teach because I truly love my students, every day, no matter what. I want to do everything I can every day in their best interests. This is why I set up my classroom for a place for them to hide and not be seen during an active shooter drill, and why I hide by the door. As their teacher, it is an easy choice to stand by that door. It is why I go to sleep thinking about how to feed or teach or clothe that one student. It is why I love data, SMART goals, but also qualitative data that we don't talk about. It is also why I see this in countless employees who go, who could go anywhere else, but stay here because they love.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jackson. All right. Well, it is Groundhog Day, and I feel like, I swear to God, it's just like it was last year in some ways. And unfortunately, two years in this pandemic, I can make one promise that I will continue to do, that I've been doing, is that my push for change will be too slow for some and too fast for others. So I can guarantee you that will continue. But I will continue to listen to the public, do my best to evolve and adapt in my policy positions on how to go where we need to get to, to get back to normal. And I believe there is an urgency to do so. Moving on, I want to thank the members of the board who went down to Richmond to lobby our delegates and senators and state government officials to get us the monies we need for passing our budget. I want to, I know our principals, teachers, staff watch this meeting typically every year for the budget proposal. I want you to know that Dr. McDade has worked very hard with each of the board members and wanted to make sure that we knew that she listened to everyone from all levels of the division on what their needs were, and worked extremely hard to try to deliver what those needs were and align them with our strategic plan. And I think as our community of staff, teachers, parents, families who look at this budget will see many things in here that they're going to really like. And you're going to hear more about them as you learn about it. And I think the budget will be posted online. Is that correct, at some point here, Mr. Wallingford? Great. Okay, if it's not already. Right. And so, we're going to, you know, we want to continue to push for the full funding of this plan. And I want to thank Dr. McDade for this evening. Historic in nature for many reasons. So last year was bleak, the future is bright. It's bright because we just passed an amazing strategic plan, launching thriving futures. And we began the ambitious walk or run towards fully funding that plan this evening. And so, for that, I am grateful to this board. I'm grateful for the public's support in getting us to this moment. And I can tell you over and over again, the future is bright for our community, and I will continue to push that way for our school division. I want to thank everyone for attending this evening and remind everyone that, you know, we value everyone's words and thoughts and opinions. At this time, we will go ahead and adjourn this evening's school board meeting.